So what they plan to spend?
And then they call, I was saying it's an election year, so watch, watch the, watch the spending start taking.
Well, don't.
Personally responsible for it.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Um, this is the meeting of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen, it's Tuesday, June twelfth, um, seven P M., we're in town hall. Uh, and we will do a roll call to order, starting with Kevin.
Kevin McCarthy here.
Paul Trimmer here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Jack Kinnylee here.
Steve Gomer here.
And we will start with the pledge of allegiance to those who would like to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is public comments, if there's anybody here that has, um, a comment to make that is not on the, on a matter, not on the agenda. Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will, um, start off with the bond anticipation note. And just tell us what we're doing, I know we got a memo.
Okay, so, um, this is my first time, so bear with me. Um, basically Paula sent you the memo, so we just need the signatures, and then after we get the signatures from the board,
Wow.
we will have the clerk, uh, put the seal on them, and then we'll send them off to, um, First Southwest, so they can get filed with the state.
Okay, this is, um, we took all the votes at our last meeting, so this is literally just assigned, and, um, I'll ask the board if anyone has a question.
I do, I, I actually passed it on to Chris earlier today.
Yep.
Could we please have a, um, as the chief financial officer, uh, a policy in, uh, in internally in place where we actually review the offered rate. Um, we're, 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 we, no, town.
Who's we, the board's segment? Okay, I see.
Um, we're, we're, we're offered a rate of one point nine five, and as I reviewed with Chris, that, that would be a rate offered to, in the current marketplace, a B double A or lower community for a one-year note.
Okay.
Okay, um.
So in other words, the bond council's going out and getting the rates, now you're, now?
No, 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 no.
So who's getting it if the town's not reviewing it?
This is, it's competitive, okay, and under this program, the co- they, they, it's competitive typically amongst banks or investment banks that would buy small deals. This is a very, very competitive market right now because their issuance in the municipal market is twenty percent lower this year than it was last year, at the same time.
Yeah.
Last year was twenty percent lower than the year prior, and in the tax regime that we have, they're very, very attractive, and for an entity like a bank, the interest on these bonds is tax-free as well. Okay, so there, there is great demand for them. If we're, if we're simply offering these out at a competitive rate and we're willing to accept one ninety-five, well, that's great, okay? But we're certainly not getting what the market offers, which I'm willing to share this with you, this is, this is called an MMD scale, which is, um, that is the, the municipal benchmark, and a triple A rate as of this morning for a one-year note is one forty-eight. Okay, and that's a substantial difference.
Is that for municipalities, not as versus corporate?
Uh, it's actually for, uh, it's a good question, yes, it is for municipalities, and it's specifically for general obligations. Okay, and there is a difference between a general obligation and, and other types of credits, so just, I, I just would love to see a policy institute that, that shops this, that holds, um, that, that holds our financial advisor to at least an understanding or an explanation, and the explanation that the, we're, we're a small issuance doesn't hold water. Eight hundred thousand dollars for a one-year serial is not a small amount of money. Okay? That's pretty, that's pretty attractive, so, that's all.
I, I tried to find, I tried to, tried to find the information that you have with your figurative myself, 'cause when the rate came, I didn't think about that good, uh, and the financial, and I asked Paula, I'd asked the financial advisor,
And it's eight ninety-seven.
and, and, uh, the reply back was that we did save money because we went through a different process, we didn't have a lot of issuance costs, which is true, uh, but I don't know how that weighed out on the, I don't think it saved us that much that it weighed out the interest.
Well, yeah, and I, but again, a financial advisor would be able to give you that breakdown.
Right, and, and I, I want that information, 'cause I, you know, it's a one-year note, it's not gonna be a tremendous amount of money, but we should be getting the very best, we should be maximizing our triple A.
Yeah, this, and it, by the way, this is not a, but I, I just wanna make sure this is clear, I'm asking for the policy because we, as a staff, depend upon our financial advisor as well. And we're not, I, I wouldn't expect, because we don't issue that much, I wouldn't expect that Paula would carry around the MMD scale in her head.
Right.
Right, so, I, ask me, I can give you, I can give you any of this stuff on a current basis, but it's, no, they're not easy to find. All right, unless you got a Bloomberg unit sitting around your office, um, that's why I asked for, simply asked for it as a policy, because, again, if this were any more substantial amount of money,
Oh, I, I, I will.
a dollar difference is becoming huge.
Yeah, I agree, and I, 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 I'm, I'm used to looking at the rates and saying, well, what's the market going for, and there are only two banks that bid on this, um, that said, uh,
Yeah, we call it up here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we will follow up with money.
Okay, just cover everything, too, great.
Thanks.
Uh, so you just wanna, you just have to sort it like this.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Do you guys all have black pens?
Um.
No.
I do.
Yes.
Yes.
See, front blank, that's very good.
I just in case.
You're like forty-one bucks for the year, then.
Yeah, I, it's.
How much?
Forty-two hundred.
Well, but more, more importantly, one of those is a roll without a paydown, so you begin to look at that differently.
It's funny. Right.
I hope.
So we might as well just go down the.
Yeah, we'll just do them in order, it's just easier, then we won't lose track of it.
Yeah, that work.
We can all be aware, we're not supposed to start too late.
They'll all be in the same way.
Well, you go, if you, we used to call, uh, tomorrow, uh, just ask, just follow up, I mean, uh, how, how, how much did you save from usual process of that?
Because we didn't have that bond council?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
I don't know how much that was, but I.
She said substantial, I don't know, but I don't know what that, that.
She wrote thousands of dollars, but isn't that two or five or?
Yeah, but I, we should be a little more, I mean, we should be, please.
Yeah, I don't have that, I don't have that number.
Here. Yeah. Okay, once Kevin does that, we'll hand them back over, and we're good to go, thank you.
All right, perfect. All right, thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks.
Nice to meet you or see you.
Nice to see you again, happy night, everybody.
Oh, it's Karen, right, Karen Crowell.
Yeah.
Oh, Karen.
I'm sorry, I should've had you.
That's okay.
Yes, our, our deputy.
I, I, I'm.
It's good, so to the public.
Yeah, 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 no, thank you, Kevin, I.
This is, I work on the ice cream truck, and I'm here, they told me the end.
Oh, I'll tell you a story someday about the people getting paid to go in and sign mortgage loans.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, next up is a, a public hearing, I'm gonna read the public hearing notice. The Cohasset Board of Selectmen, acting as liquor license authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June twelfth, two thousand eighteen, at seven oh five P M. in the selectmen's office, Town Hall, forty-one Highland Ave., to consider the application for Five South Main Street Inc., D V A, Five South Main Street, located at Five South Main Street, for a new annual wine and malt restaurant license. The proposed owner manager is Brian Raymond Hennaberry. The license premises is seven hundred and twenty-five square feet, one entrance and two exits, with seating for twenty-eight. The public is invited to offer public input on this proposal in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. So Brian, if you wanna come up, and, um, Chris, we didn't get any, any submissions in writing from anybody.
No, 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 and the only, again, the police.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just sent back that one note, that everything was, everything checked out fine, so there was a, there was a, the traditional background check, but everything is clear.
Yeah, so let me just read that first, and then I'll have Brian introduce himself, um, we do have a, um, memo to the selectmen from Bill Quigley, Chief of Police.
Sure.
Please be advised that Cohasset Police Detectives conducted a full background check on Brian Hennaberry, D O B, I won't say it, between June fifth, two thousand eighteen, and June eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Detective Harrison Schmidt checked the references, former employers and professional counterparts of Mr. Hennaberry, and uncovered zero derogatory information. Detective Schmidt also reviewed Massachusetts criminal offender record information, query, and found no issues. So with that, if you could introduce yourself, and then tell us what you're doing.
Sure, uh, thank you, I'm, uh, Brian Hennaberry, I'm the owner of Five South Main, uh, right across the street here, um, I am applying for a beer and wine license in there. We wanted to do, uh, just a real small menu of, uh, local craft beers, uh, some nice local wines, organic wines, things like that, and then a couple of, uh, you know, uh, brunch-based cocktails for the weekend, too.
Um.
And then we were, our plan is to keep all the liquor, uh, inside, inside the facility, too, uh, inside, I know we have two tables outside, but we won't be serving alcohol there.
Okay, um, great, do you wanna, anybody want questions?
Uh, uh, right, so brunch-based, uh, drinks, would that include hard liquor, like Bloody Mary, or would you have limosas?
Uh, no, so, uh, the only thing we wouldn't be able to do is Bloody Mary, we have plans for a brewed Mary, uh, made with IPA.
Ooh.
It's different.
But limosas and things like that.
Yeah, it's really good, too.
Ooh, yeah, um, Kevin, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so Brian, have you held a liquor license with you?
I have not, no.
You'd be okay, and, um, we have policies and guidelines, have you reviewed them?
Yes, I've, bring them all out, read, read them.
Okay, uh, any questions on them for us?
Um, so you guys, you need my schedule ahead of time and things like that, seems pretty straightforward, and then if I'm ever, um, taking a vacation, you need it ahead of time, things like that, that, that's, it all seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
And I know the police did a background check on my manager, too, uh, Anne Marie Robesha, too, so.
So, I, I just wanna say, um, we, we take those regulations very seriously, just so I don't anticipate there's gonna be any difficulties with you at all, but, but we, uh, we have a number of them, we treat everybody the same, so we need everybody to adhere to those very carefully, so I do wanna emphasize that to you.
Yeah.
Make sure you and your manager know those regulations, if there's ever any questions or problem with them, I think it's procedures where you call the police immediately to notify them.
Yeah.
We really wanna make sure you, uh, adhere to those strictly, 'cause we require that of everybody, and in doing so, we need to make sure everybody does it the same way, so.
Yeah.
Just if you would, please, I.
Yes.
Steve, any comments?
No, I, you actually answered one of my questions about, about outside service, um, and, uh, I hate to say this in, in such a way, but I actually enjoyed going to your place for dinner and, and bringing my own bottle, that was it. I, I recognize the business reasons for doing it, but I do, I did like that, that, uh, that possibility.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I wish you great success.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Jeff?
S- and, could, you guys explain to me why we wouldn't allow service on the tables outside on the sidewalk, is it because it's not private property, or?
Yeah, so my understa- if it, where we've had that request before, we've required, you know, it was, uh, it was Mr. Dooley's and, um, the Red Lion Inn, and I can't remember where else, but we required, you know, them fencing it off, and it was actually on their property, and this is the sidewalk, so it's a public way, so, you know, I have concerns with that. And I just, I, I just don't think, I think the license is, goes to the premises, and we've had this discussion a lot, too, as opposed to, you know, where's the boundaries of the premises, or the premises of the premises.
Yeah, if you have.
So in Boston, they do allow you to, uh, serve liquor on the sidewalk, it's a separate permit, you have to apply to the liquor license, and then you go get a zoning.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, I mean, that's certainly something, yeah.
But I mean, I, so, so let me just say personally, I think it's nice having activity on the sidewalks and being able to go, I think it attracts more people downtown, so I wasn't sure why we weren't doing it. I'm not trying to raise any issues, I'm just asking a general question as to why we wouldn't do it.
Yeah. No, and I, I, I think if that became an issue, and you were like, wow, boy, you know, if I can only do that, I think it's probably worth coming, and, and to Jack's point, I think it might be a planning,
Yeah. Right.
might be more a planning board, um, permitting process, but we can certainly have that discussion if, if that's something.
Again, next thing I could talk to Bean, just have him do a little research, and see what other people do, like, Boston's its own world, only, you know, it's all set of rules.
Yeah, just kind of keep that in our pocket.
Yeah. But I've seen it, uh, as you pointed out to Jack in other places, where you have, you know, ropes fenced off, I mean, um, but that's the policy of the town, it's a top. Yeah.
It just is, I mean, it's a, it's, it's a relatively, yeah, it's a relatively narrow sidewalk, too, so it's just, you know, just we gotta figure out the.
I agree. Yes. Yes. And you also have to make sure that it doesn't leave the fenced-in area, 'cause you don't want people, oh, hi, and they walk over and attack the kids with a glass.
That's the point of keeping it.
Well, we are serving food outside, right, and, you know, I mean, so I, I'd like to just. Yeah, 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 yeah. No, it's worth exploring, I, I'll, I'll, I'll ask at it.
Yeah.
Um, and I imagine you're not gonna have taps, you'll have just bottles?
Yeah, no taps, no.
Okay, great, um, and just in terms of the assistant manager, or somebody else that's in charge of the liquor license when you're not there, would be, highly recommend that you give us that information.
Okay, I know the police have, have it all, but I can give it to you, too.
Yeah, um, just so that we know if there's any, you know, just so we have a list, if one of us asks, and I went over there, and Brian wasn't anywhere nearby, well.
Sure.
Just, just copy us when you, the police need it as a first order, so they know, like, just copy us, just so we have it in the, in the files.
Yes.
Yeah.
We need it in the story.
Sure.
Yep, okay. All right, um, anybody like to make a motion to, um, hold on, let me get my language in front of me, to, um, approve an annual wine and malt, uh, restaurant license for, um, Five South Main Street owner manager Brian Hennaberry?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, good luck.
Good, well, I congratulate you, so much.
Thank you very much.
Can you just check with John about, we'll send it up to the Boston mental processes.
Yeah.
Sure, okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay.
Um, so we don't have our rec commissioners here?
No, they wasn't here for a little bit, um.
Okay, seven twenty. Oh, seven forty.
Uh, necrometal seven forty, um.
Oh, I forgot, that's public hearing, huh, oh, there you are, now I remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry about that, um, so, um, do we have to wait till seven twenty?
Um, you can, um.
I think we need to wait till seven twenty.
From seven, uh, no, I don't, what is, what is that notice?
So. It's, the notice says seven twenty P M., so as a public hearing, we, we can't start till the posted time?
Okay, you got it.
No, mine says seven ten, that's why.
Yeah, that clock is slow.
Well, the one we, I mean, we can pause on a rare form tonight, uh.
It's seven sixteen, I think.
No, but the hearing notice that I have in front of me, I'm gonna read it from the records, it's seven twenty.
Yeah, I don't wanna. Okay, no, no, I thought it was either two, so I, I don't know why this is seven ten.
Okay, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna sign the license, and then I'll do just that, Steve.
Wait, wait, may I suggest, uh, Madam Chairman, that we actually accomplish something, how about we go through the minutes and get that out of the way?
There you go, excellent idea, okay.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of five twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, board's slide.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Now, let's go through the agenda. I'm sorry.
Talk ourselves right out of a meeting.
So, I, I, I will, um, okay, I will read, um, the hearing notice, uh, we have a public hearing.
Slowly.
Public, public hearing notice, poll hearings. The Cohasset Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June twelfth, two thousand eighteen, at seven twenty P M. in the selectmen's office, Town Hall, forty-one Highland Ave., Cohasset Mask, to consider a request to install new pole eighty-three slash fifty, approximately thirty-five feet plus or minus northeast from existing pole eighty-three, beginning at a point approximately thirty-five feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Sawyer Street. This pole installation is requested from the Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc. The public is op- invited to offer public input on this proposal in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. Did we receive anything in writing?
Yeah, it was in, in the package.
All right, thank you, Steve. Um, I have one second.
Made for the public, though?
Yes, from the public.
Oh.
Um, okay, you can introduce yourself, and.
Hi, good evening, my name is Jose Vasquez, I work for National Grid, um, I'm out of the Brockton office, and I'm a engineer, and, um, just proposing to, um, place this pole at a customer's request. Um, they currently have an overhead service going from across the street to their home, and, um, they would like a pole closer so they can go underground to the house. So that's the reason why, we're petitioning for the pole.
And it's gonna be on their property?
It'll be on the public way, just to keep, 'cause, uh, when you come down North Main Street, it's kind of like a wide, um, section that the town owns, so to keep it, with the other poles kind of somewhere off the road, we're gonna keep it on the grass, you know, far back enough away from the road, so it doesn't hinder, and then they can go underground.
Okay.
So is this, it, it, it just, I, I, I see the map, but for point of clarification, I'm gonna direct this one to Chris for a second, it's, it's a local knowledge.
Yes. Oh.
You get North Main Street, and if I remember correctly, um, on the south side of North Main, there's a sidewalk, then a small grassy area right of way, I, I think it's the town's right of way. Is that where this pole would be going, is it that right of way?
The pole is on the north side, uh, so if you come to the north side, well.
Currently, the pole's on the north side.
The pole is on the south side, currently.
Currently, it's, okay, so the move is to the other side.
To the other side, correct, on the side of seventy-two, the house seventy-two.
No, that's, uh, Vanderweil.
Vanderweil.
So Sawyer Street's on the.
It's, um.
Evans's old house.
Danny's, yeah.
Uh, got it, got it.
Okay.
And so the pole across the street at the end of Sawyer Street is gonna be moved across, or you're adding a pole, they're staying, and you're adding a pole.
No, they're staying, we, you know, we're adding a pole, and basically, yeah, so.
It's a brand-new pole.
Correct, right now there's an existing service that goes from that pole at Sawyer Street to the house.
Got it.
They wanna remove that, add a pole on, you know, closer to the home, so they can go underground, 'cause we won't let them go across the road.
With their wires. Got it.
Got it.
Makes perfect sense.
But the existing pole, you can stay there and service the houses on that side, or something.
Yes. Correct, yeah, it's needed, 'cause it generally sort of takes the primary down.
That's, that's.
And essentially, when we're adding this pole, we're essentially adding it on to the individual who wants to go around his property or near it.
Yeah, it's like, it's like, there's some. Okay.
Near the property, all right, yeah.
So they're, they're, they're the most impacted, then, it sounds like, and no one else is objected, no one's objected, is?
I think it's just town property next to them, I don't think the.
Which next name?
Um, Charlie Henry's there.
That's more than that.
Okay.
That's, that's the Henry's next.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I, my, my only question, I think it's already been answered, is there's, uh, and Brian, you can pipe in on this, there's no hindrance to traffic in any particular way, there's no, you know, it's not any closer to the,
No.
Well, this is, this is a pole that doesn't exist currently, but, um, some of the poles, for instance, that run along Cedar Street in particular are really close to the road, this, this, uh, is separating from there.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, I don't know.
No, no, I, I, I was saying, no, no offense, I'm just, I'm going after the town officials, 'cause, 'cause I can't find you when I need to, so, oh, I can be in my car, you can go find me.
Yeah, this is off the shoulder.
No, it works.
Oh, no.
No, it's, it's off the shoulder, and, um, and it's gonna be out of the way of traffic and plows and such, and it, it's really, it's, it's just truncating the overhead line to their, to their house, guiding the pole, and then they're gonna go underground.
Chris, yeah, no, no other, no other questions for me, thank you, Sam.
No, no problem.
Jack, any?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, all right, Kevin, yeah, all right, um, is there a motion to approve the request, um, for a new pole, um, eighty-three fifty on North Main Street?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, so, no, 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 you're good, you're good, I'm looking at my colleagues, and I'm gonna say, wow.
Oh. Oh, I'm good. Yeah.
Signature?
Well, thank you so much.
What's that?
Thank you.
Is it just the clerk's signature, so I don't know, is that to you, Diane? Is it the clerk of the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, and then the town clerk has to sign it.
All right, so I'm gonna sign this, and it'll take up a few more minutes, and, and we are really, uh, the last couple of poll hearings we had took months and weeks and hours.
Keep going, really, keep going, don't look back.
So.
Don't look back.
Oh, yeah, this was a, this was a very efficient poll hearing, we had the last round.
I had a couple.
Well, if you wanna jump this, if you wanna jump an item up, you can, I mean, uh.
Lady of Washington, you gotta change, uh, move the agenda?
To what?
Did you want something, hooked up?
Well, I mean, do you wanna move the time meeting, the, the, the six nineteen conversation up, you, you have a twenty minutes before the, the right's gonna get here anyway.
You want the. What about, um, or wanna discuss committee appointments?
Yeah, yeah, whatever you.
'Cause we're not making any appointments, it's just a general discussion, let's do that, um.
Yeah, 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 no, it's fine.
Lady of Washington, change the agenda, move the committee appointments to the present time?
Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, so, um, just some questions on, I, right now, I don't know, um, how, how we're doing with, um, committee applications, Tracy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if you have a general sense of whether we're getting a lot in or not, or, okay, so.
I mean, everybody, a lot of people that are up have re-upped and sent in the application, I ha- I don't have a lot of new ones.
Okay.
Maybe five of that.
Okay, so, I, I think what I'd like to talk, ask the board about, and have you provide some input on, is I'm planning to get this on the agenda for the twenty-sixth, 'cause the agenda for the nineteenth is pretty much, we're gonna be mostly talking Town Hall and a little bit of goals and objectives, um, sorry, um, so, I, I think we should probably get it out there, and maybe ask Tracy to reach out again to all the committee chairs, um, to make sure that there, you know, any member that's looking for reappointment submits their application, and, um, and then we can maybe get a press release out to the Mariner this week for any, anybody, anybody who's new to go on the website and fill out an application form, and we'll get that. The Troyka appointments typically happen in the middle of July.
Right.
So, right now, my concern is anybody that's interested in serving on any of the selectman-appointed committees, get their applications in soon, um.
If you, excuse me, if you do a press release, could you, you send a copy of that to us?
Yeah, what I'll do is we'll do something, I go on our Facebook page, we put up a Facebook, I'll put, I'll put a link to the, to the application page, 'cause the, the electronic application's been really, really helpful for all of us,
Yeah, I'm thinking of. Yeah. Right.
And the people can just spell out that, send it in.
But I mean, the, sort of the promotion, the press release thing, 'cause that makes it very postable, Facebook thing, we can put it on our sites, and, and maybe that'll help.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And I think we should probably ask for, to make sure, I mean, originally, we did sent, get a press, put a press release together, and I think we asked for the fifteenth as being an, uh, um, application submission deadline. Would everybody be okay about, um, moving that up maybe to the twenty-first?
Give everybody an extra week, I guess.
We give them an extra week to apply, but it's also in on a Thursday, so that the packets can be prepared on Friday for us, um, okay, so, and then, you know, anybody who's at home and listening, really encourage you to consider serving on a committee, there's a lot of committees, there's committees that still have openings, I think Affordable Housing has an opening, then is unfilled, and, um, they're seeking members.
I think C P C has an opening.
C P C has a public, um, community member opening, um, I think Harbor's all set.
Harbor's all set. Zoning, zoning has an opening, um, it's going to have an opening, uh, there's a longstanding member who's gonna retire.
Right, at the end of this term, at Ju- June thirtieth, okay, so the zoning board will, then Lacy.
Yeah. Um, Ben, Ben Lacy, he's been on the board for many, many years.
I think he's moving.
Yeah, well, yeah, he might be, he might be, well, he's splitting his time.
Moving. Yes.
Between here and Big City.
All right, and that's great, um.
How many members are on that board on the Z V A, five?
I think it's free voting, two associates, voting capacity.
Yeah, but I think they had. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it's actually six, I think it's three and three, but I could be, and they're right, they, they, they rotate in and out depending on potential conflicts, which is the reason so many, but I, is at least five, I wanna say that there's.
Okay, they're.
No, I think it's six, I wanna say it's six, I'll, we'll double check, I think it's six, I think it's three and three.
So, um, this is another, a couple things that I wanna get everybody's input on, and maybe if we, if we have input on it, I don't feel comfortable taking a vote on a couple of these things tonight, just because it's not on the agenda, but, but one thing is the master plan, um, committee, so we charge them through this June thirtieth, um, but they need more time, so I think what we should do is extend the charge in all the appointments, without having each and every one of them go through the process of having to apply again, or get, you know, get designated from their committee, um, I don't know, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
No, let's make it easier.
I think that should just.
I think they're looking to wrap it up this fall, so what, you go through twelve thirty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, so.
Yeah, this, end of this year, yeah.
Right.
'Cause you're, you're, yeah, you're, you're, you're ready to go target for the other.
Not yet.
Yeah. And it's.
Are you good to go, is Tim here?
Tim's not here yet, but the four of us are here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we come in?
Yeah, come on in, and we can, um, we'll get going in a minute, um, so, i- if everybody's comfortable with that, I will just schedule that for like a vote on the next, even the nineteenth, we can just,
Okay.
Yeah, it's easy.
Just do two minutes, get it, get that formally extended, put it on the agenda, um, and then we'll be all set. And then, on the twenty-sixth, I'd like to have maybe, depending on how busy the twenty-sixth, um, is, but I would, I would like to talk about putting, um, some, um, some meat behind some of our appointments, and, um, asking, um, asking that when we send out, we send out a welcome to a committee at once, they've been, you know, you need to do this, that, and the other thing. One thing I would like to recommend to the board to consider is having them, um, take the online ethics test prior to getting sworn in. Um, what we've done in the past is swear them in, because we want them to participate in the committee as soon as possible. Um, but what happens is, once the committees get rolling, and it's six months later, and eight months later, and then all of a sudden, there's a lot of people that haven't taken their ethics test, and, um, that does not sit well with me, um, and, and then the clerk has to chase them down, so there's, there are a lot of people that just kind of fade into the woodwork, and it, and it gets further complicated, because you have to take it every two years, and most terms are three. So, so the clerk has to chase people down that, like us, or, you know, or, you know, somebody that's been on, like, Z V A for forever, and, um, so I think if we can get all new members to do that first, then get sworn in, that potentially leaves some kind of a time period where they, um, can't participate to the extent that they would be adding to a, you know, they would be creating a quorum or taking a vote, but they could certainly go to meetings as they could anyway. Anyway, just, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that? but they could certainly go to meetings as they could anyway. Anyway, just, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that?
Just one question, as, um, that's a requirement of the state to do the ethics test.
The state ethics test.
So, we should just make sure that there's no language in that requirement that that will allow us to do that, so I'm saying, as long as there's nothing that says.
All we're doing is requiring it.
Oh, yeah, the timing of, of before the swearing in might might be, that's probably not a big deal, but the language may specify you need to do the ethics test, but within three or six months.
Right.
In case someone could, someone could call us on that.
Yeah, maybe that's.
Yeah, you're supposed to do it within a certain amount of time of your appointment, um, I don't, but but I don't, so you have a, you have a deadline, I don't know that, I don't know that you can't do it in advance, but I can find out.
Yeah, Lampkin could probably tell you whether, as long as it is, fine with me, you just don't wanna be called on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But that's a good, that's a good point, yeah, I just wanna try to streamline everything so that it's like, you know, the s- the second you get your appointment note, you need, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, you gotta do this, you gotta do that.
Only, yeah.
Good idea. It makes sense.
And elected positions tend to be a little different, but, um, and then, um, and then I do wanna talk a- at another meeting, maybe in July, about, um, whether to set some specific requirements for committees for training, particularly hearing boards and, um, even us, I mean, the sl- the school committee has to do it, um, and and, um, training, online ethics, um, I think that's it.
By the way, just to piggyback on the committee training question, so I was at a, only cause it's relevant to the conversation now, the committee meeting, M M A, and I was at last week, uh, we talked about the zoning, the part of the state, the status of the zoning bill, and one of the things that are kicking around out there is mandatory training for planning and zoning members funded by the state.
Even better.
Right, uh, we, in partnership with, you know, the local planning councils and local municipalities, um, and none of us had, I mean, I said, that's great, I said, we'd love to have the state pay for training and New York has done that for a number of years, um, and, um, so we'll see if that actually happens.
So, so some advantage to that is if it were something that somebody came here, cause ideally, that would be great, and I do wanna offer something in the fall, again, we didn't do it last year, but just something where it's a, you know, you know, pub, you know, municipal government one-on-one with some open meeting law, minutes and agenda kind of rules.
Well, the planning and zoning, probably very specific planning and zoning training, and it couldn't even be set up like the, uh, ethics or test where you can just go online and 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 review things, which is.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Right, there are a lot, I mean, I know with the assessors, there are a lot of programs and CONCOM too has a lot of programs out there that I don't know that they cost all that much, so.
I don't know, and we, and the town will pay for the training, I mean, we've we've offered that.
Right. Yeah.
The assessor, I think, is required, I think it ought to be an assessor, I mean, you're not gonna have to take certain training within a certain amount of time.
Yeah.
I think school committee has certain requirements too, they don't let us relate with those, um, but the planning and zoning might actually happen and the state might fund it, which would be great.
Yep. Right, so I just wanna have that conversation with you guys and, um, you know, have any input. So, we, so we do it right and we get everybody off to a good start and really feeling like they're supported by the town, you know, and not just thrown into, um, you know, to meetings where they're not really sure the mechanics of that, um, okay. Um, so, we're really fast tonight, so we're really stalling, I have to do something really slowly.
Nope, you do have your. You do have your affordable housing plan.
We do have our affordable housing, um, let's do that.
Yes.
I hope I'm not late.
No, you're early now.
Yeah, but are you in, are you expecting anybody else from the Affordable Housing Committee?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do that, you wanna come on up, Beth? So Beth is a relatively new member of the Elder Affairs Board?
Mm, probably, uh, about a year and a half.
Okay. Um, and they have, um, asked us to, um, approve her as the the CEA liaison or or CEA rep to the Affordable Housing Steering Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you don't mind just introducing yourself and address for the record.
Oh, okay, um, it's actually Elizabeth Tarpe, twelve eighth January, O'Passan's.
And anything else you wanna add?
Uh, no, I'm just really excited, I, getting on the Elder Affairs Committee has sort of opened up a whole new world and now I'm starting to get involved in more stuff than I'm enjoying.
And then you get stuck in aisle seven of Shaw's, talking for forty-five minutes and.
Yeah, and we bottom line, so, um, no, I just find it very interesting and, um, one thing's kind of leading to another, so.
That's great.
Yeah, just wanna help where I can.
That's terrific, um, okay, anybody have any questions, Beth? No?
No.
All right.
No, good, well, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, thanks for volunteering.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, so I'll take a motion to appoint, uh, Beth Tarpe as the CEA rep to the Affordable Housing Steering Committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Good luck, thank you.
Good news.
Thanks a lot.
So next up, a little early, is, um, a joint meeting with the Recreation Committee, which is something we need to do because the Rec Commissioners are, is an elected position, when there's an opening where somebody resigns, which we did have a resignation, um, the Rec Commission and the Board of Selectmen, um, meet in joint session to, um, discuss anybody, um, any, a new candidate and and a new appointment. So, if you guys don't mind coming up and introducing yourselves for the audience at home, and and then you'll have to formally open your meetings so that you're in session, and then we'll go from there, okay?
There's two chairs up here, if three of you just wanna pull your chairs up.
It's just easier for, okay, yeah, for our viewers at home.
Maybe.
Hello.
Thank you for being here.
Hello.
My name's Jenny Furiel, I've been on the Rec Commission now for about four years.
And I'm Abigail Alvis, I think this is, I know it's my second term, I just don't know how many, how many years in.
It happens to all of us.
Really, that many? Yeah. And?
Jeff Hartwell, recently elected to the Recreation Commission.
Congratulations, welcome aboard, like recently as in May?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, took that ethics test yet?
Um, I haven't, but I just learned that I should do that.
We were just talking about that.
Smart man.
Jackie Lorenzo, my second year, yes, I took it before.
Yeah, thank you very much, um, um, and then why don't you t- uh, t- tell us a little bit about, um, your vacancy and your new candidate?
Yeah. We all. So Molly Frame resigned and we have our new candidate, Tim Bernika, and he met with us at our last meeting, was that last week?
Yeah.
Last Tuesday, thank you, oh, a week, and so we are here to ask that Tim be appointed to the Recreation Commission.
Okay, T- Tim, would you like to introduce yourself and give us the vacant policy show?
Sure. Sure, my, uh, my name is Tim Bernika, um, I've been involved in, um, I I've, uh, participated in the recreation program through my kids for the last, it's just twelve years anyways, they're they're twelve-year-olds, twins, um, and I've seen the the type of program that the Rec Commission or the Rec Department offers, and it's always been sort of in the back of my mind that if there was ever a chance to 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 volunteer and help out with these guys, I'd I'd like to do that. Um, and when this all transpired, you know, I just, I knew it was the right time. Um, I'm I'm just coming from a co- a coaching little league, I'm heading out to coach basketball, so I've been very involved in the, in this, in the sports programs.
Can you dress the part?
Yeah, it's, yeah, um, so I, well, when it, when it, when it became, uh, uh, you know, possible to get involved and and volunteer to, um, step up and help these guys out,
I like.
it's, you know, it's a great program, so I just wanna be sure that that it continues, it's, good work.
Great, thank you.
Good hire.
I know, and he's a Harvard boy.
Good.
Yep, yep, Kevin, any questions?
No, I'm on set.
Paul?
I'm good, thank you, we're stepping up to the plate as we say.
Okay, we're gonna get you right to your, uh, your basketball.
Do you wanna call on your meeting in the session?
Oh.
We actually did it out there.
Oh, you did?
Okay, that's great.
Okay, so good, you're you're still in session.
We're in session right now.
Yeah, right, and then you'll just have to adjourn at some point, okay, great, thank you, thanks goodness.
You're on record at the session.
Right.
Make a motion of, uh, orange, did you, um, make a motion for a vote for, uh, Tim Bernika for the vacant position on the Recreation?
Second.
Do we need a roll call?
You should, cause all the members.
Let's do a roll call vote, so, um, we'll start with the Rec Commissioners. It's a, you're voting on whether to approve, so an aye would have it.
Yeah, well, aye.
Okay.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank aye.
Aye.
Aye here.
Okay, it's unanimous, welcome aboard, good luck, and, uh, thank you.
Excellent.
Excellent, great, thank you.
Thank you for stepping up to this.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any cookies today?
Thank you.
Thank you for.
I remember.
Was it sure that's a lot?
Oh, no, that's.
I can go walk the dog.
It's all right.
And then do we call, do I call the meeting?
You can, and you can do a adjourn right now.
Well, you have to adjourn and just break it in your minutes.
Thank you.
Don't do a by roll call. Good luck.
And I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're back up this week, that's good. That was the first adjournment I've had with that.
It's good, yeah, then, we should, oh, oh, we're gonna end really early, why don't we put more things on this agenda?
Go ahead, keep going.
There's, there's nothing wrong with ending a little early, so.
Okay.
It's okay, all right, it's okay, this is something you should aspire to.
Yeah, it's okay.
All right, so. All right, thank you, so I get really high marks, Diane knows how to run a meeting.
You've got a lot of crap, a big guy, it's yours, big job. Deliver the goods.
Um.
On time, on budget.
You're embarrassing me.
Yes, well, let's not rub it in, we're not gonna, we're not good at that, we're gonna play nice.
The plan is, the plan is worked.
No, I'm not there.
We're gonna play nice.
Um, so, I am gonna hand out, um, just a draft that I did, um, for just general discussion tonight, because what I wanna do is make sure that next week's meeting, um, which we're gonna be primarily focused on discussing the Town Hall, um, goes off, um, without a hitch and that we're very focused and we use our, we're not here all night rehashing things that we don't need to rehash, so, um, so originally, we s- we set this date on our calendars to discuss, um, goals and objectives for this, for this upcoming year, for fiscal nineteen. And, um, so I think what I'd like to do is start the meeting off really quickly with just, um, reviewing on paper the goals that we had set for ourselves and also for Chris, um, and one of those was the Town Hall, so we'll just look at those, we'll, I'll ask everybody to bring their calendars so we can set meetings, we need to, we need to, um, do Chris's review, we need to then, we need to set our goals for the upcoming year and we need to set Chris's goals after we set our goals, and then we need to, um, come up with a, a kind of a strategy to get us to toward a budget message by the end of September. So, at the beginning of next week's meeting, I'd like to just glance at the goals and objectives, knowing that probably within the next week, we're gonna queue up the review process and and then get some dates on the calendar of of how we're gonna execute that through the summer and through September, and then we'll go right into the Town Hall discussion. Um, so these are the things that I just, um, kind of made note of as a way to frame, um, the conversation for next Tuesday. So, one of the things I want is an update from the Town Manager on some of the loose ends, um, you know, what's the status of the owner's project manager and the architecture firm? You know, do do, are there renegotiations that need to take place, should we, you know, charge a a a course of one one kind or another? I don't wanna get into any of those details tonight, um, where we stand with any kind of appropriations, um, because clearly, there'll be some move somewhere and we're gonna probably need some money to do that, um, then I thought we could summarize, and I have a question to pose to all of you before we do, uh, before we do one C, but just kind of summarize what we have heard were the concerns that resulted in the, um, vote not passing on, uh, May twelfth, um, and then take public, um, input for things that we haven't identified, you know, somebody, I'm sure a lot of people will say, well, you didn't talk about that. One of the things I wondered if it would be helpful to all of you is to, for us to collect that or Tracy to collect that over the next week and just put a list together that goes out with our packets, so that we're, we're starting with, cause a lot of us are are obviously gonna have the same ideas, it didn't pass because, you know, I didn't really understand what it was gonna do, what the impact was to my taxes, or whatever the kind of general things are, that we start with sort of a, a list, um, discuss them, and then go through the objectives that we set, which are on the back of the piece of paper I gave you, those, that was the, that, those were the votes we took on January ninth, and using kind of the concerns that we've heard from the community, look at all each of these and say, well, you know, did these objectives, how, you know, what can we do differently going forward to address the community's concerns, which led to the failed vote, vis a vis the original, originally set forth, um, forth objectives. Um, then, come up with some real concrete next steps, um, let the Town Hall Building Committee know what's next for them, and then set some general timelines for deliverables, whether it's action at special town meeting or whether it's we want a budget of, that looks like this by then, um, and then what can we do with respect to getting, um, a public information process going? Cause I definitely, you know, I'm getting too far into my opinions on it, that, I think that needs to be a piece of of, um, the conversation, so.
Can I suggest we add?
Yeah, please.
Could we add a a line that says, uh, selectmen's role in the, in the process?
Yep.
And we can discuss that specifically?
Yep, so what, maybe what I can do is add, you know, select, everybody's roles under D, you know, what's the Town Hall doing, what are we doing?
I would actually do it before that, I would say, what's, you know, what what's, what do we think our role's gonna be going forward?
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And then I think we'd be, we'll be a little bit clearer on what the role for, uh, yeah, right.
Everybody else is, okay, yeah.
And, in addition to that, the, uh, D calls for specific guidance for the Town Hall Building Committee.
Mm-hmm.
I I simply point out that while we were talking about committee assignments previously, among them, uh, let's be clear, we never charge the committee, period. So, whatever our specific guidance is gonna be able to come out in, I would think would be resulting in a charge.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and the second part of that is the question of membership, um, who who wants to come back? Who, who should we be thinking about, uh, not who personally, but who skills?
Right.
Should we be thinking about for inclusion, and then maybe wasn't included the last time, and and that, that sort of thing.
Right. Okay.
And skills, by the way, are not just, um, legal construction development, they also include things like community outreach, right?
Yep, yep.
Um, communication, that's, that sort of thing.
Yeah. So, we did charge them, but we can, that's the piece of of this that we probably, we charged them with moving the project forward according to the objectives set forth by the Board of Selectmen, so we charged and raised them and they're still on term.
Right, which is. For what it's worth, we did that in the rearview mirror, and so let's, let's be clear about putting the charge together this time, which is not looking at it half, more than halfway through the process, but rather, it sets, it sets the objective up front.
We'll address that, yeah. Right, right, yes. Okay, so I'll, I'll more, I'll massage that language a little bit and and address that, okay, okay.
Fair enough.
Could I also make a request of the Town Hall Committee, um, could we get the final information for each one of those options we looked at? I mean, cause there was a lot of moving parts at the end, Chris, and I'd like them to finalize each option so that we have a package for each option that we can examine before we all get together and talk. Cause, I mean, in the end, we're gonna end up talking a lot about the options and I'd like, I'd actually personally like to spend some time looking at all of them, so.
You talking about the three options?
Yes, I am.
Well, in in that case, I mean, you you have three resulting options that were examined, but alt- uh, uh, no matter what, we were all looking at them as we sat here, as opposed to days in advance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I just want, I want, I want, if I can get a week to look at them, I'd be great, I'd like to do it.
So.
You know, the pre- before you give the committee a charge and say, you like this particular choice, and take that to schematic design, that were the options they presented, right? Not necessarily, I mean, I, I'm, I'm even going farther back than that, I I just, I never, you know, I, I mean, I personally don't know what the final package was for each one of the options, so I'm asking, could we have the committee, you know, give to us, um, the final package on each one of these options? I'm sure they have all the information.
Here, I got one there.
It's all online, right, great, I agree.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, I want, but you might curate it in a way that you can look at.
Yes, exactly, ahead of time.
Exactly, and I want them to be comfortable that they're giving us the the information they want us to see. Well, there were th- there were the, was it three?
I thought there were three.
There were three.
Three options, so that's what we're talking about, yes, that's it.
They're originally.
Right.
But they, uh, a a former selectman, he used to make the point, uh, with some force that when presented with big and momentous decisions, but having been done so at the last minute, we're, we're, we're not doing our job, being deliberative, et cetera. And, uh, I, you know, I, I agree, it's, stuff like this, when you're asking, when you're asking the town to spend a a substantial amount of money, we really do need some time to look at this stuff.
So, I, it, it not only is it, so let me just get it in the package and get it out.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know they're planning, they are planning to be here at most of the committee, they they may have to post, um, so.
Are you for next Tuesday?
Yes, obviously.
By the way, I'm gathering we're meeting here.
Questions, uh, we, uh.
How you doing?
I I I prefer to meet here, um, you know, I like when we do our goals and objectives, if we're sitting in a conference room and having m- more of a conversation,
So, go out there.
but I think this is a, this is a meeting and this is where we need to be.
Right, right, right.
I agree. I agree.
Right.
On, on the, uh, public input, uh, is that, are we asking them to listen and hear public input on the nineteenth? So, uh, you, you're gonna be inviting, we're gonna be inviting people to come and.
Well. I'm gonna invite, well, this isn't a public hearing, that kind of a, you know, it's a, it's a board of selectmen meeting, um, I do want, I do wanna
Right.
ask the audience at that time in the meeting if there's something that we haven't identified that needs to be heard, now, I don't want it, this to turn into you know, every person's opinion on design and, I, I absolut- this is not what this meeting's about, this meeting is about moving this project forward, and, but I do, like, if we're up here discussing, well, you know, I think a lot of people didn't vote because they didn't feel like they had enough information, or they didn't like the building design or whatever, I wanna identify all that, but I also wanna give the opportunity of somebody sitting in the audience, like, wait a minute, you know, this is why, I think, you know, I, I, I do wanna hear from some people if we're not covering their concerns.
No, I think that's fine, just.
We're gonna make an announcement, put it in the Mariner and say, you know, we're looking for input, or?
Yeah. Yeah.
No.
If we wanna do that for more, no?
Do you want, do you want?
Uh-uh.
The, uh, the community board, Facebook board
Mm-hmm.
had a fair amount of conversation going back and forth, and some of it, especially when you dug down into the commentary section, some of it, a lot of it carried with it, um, a fair amount of negativity on the view.
Mm-hmm.
Now, my point in all of this is that, uh, it, it's worth.
The, the physical, what the building looked like?
No, 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 the, I'm sorry, the view, the view of the project, the view of, so in other words, there was, there was a lot of, there was a fair number of commentary about, we don't need to spend money on this, et cetera, et cetera, oh, it's gonna kill our schools.
Right, right. Right.
Many of the things that I had, I had pointed out had been expressed to me directly, uh, by other people, not, not folks making those comments, I guess my point is that
Sure, yep.
maybe a, a chat with the, you know, the administrator that inviting, because it did seem to be a gathering spot to have the commentary.
Right.
Inviting those people to make the point publicly as opposed to on a
Yep.
Facebook page, or those that were likewise in favor of it to make, you know, to make their views known publicly, I'm thinking about just publicizing it.
Yep.
And I, 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 you know, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of people will say on, on, on social media, that they may not have the courage to say publicly, and I think this is a worthwhile time to, to ask that, ask what's supposed to come forward.
Social media that they won't do publicly. Right, 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 right. Right. So, my, my only, and, and this is, I'm glad we're having this conversation, this is why I will put it on the agenda, because my only, I don't want this to be like a public forum.
No, this isn't a, this isn't a review of the project or the work that was done on it, but rather, I would rather have someone come out publicly and say, I understand that this is going to, to
But I absolutely.
take money away from
The schools.
From the schools.
I agree.
Well, which is, okay, now you've heard it, tell me about how you understand that to be the case?
Right.
Because it's gonna help inform us as to the way we, we, we actually approach that
Right. Right.
question, concern, whatever it might be.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, I, I, and I, I agree, like, I, I've already done sort of a list in my own head and I, I really would like everybody to maybe just send it to Tracy and we'll just come up with a list to look at, and then I will ask if anybody has anything to add, um, but what I really don't wanna do is to get into that back and forth.
No, I'm not looking for, I'm not look.
Where, where they're saying something and then we feel like we have to respond and say, what do you mean? I was gonna throw a money for.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about it as just a, a matter of collecting that, those co- the comments
Data. Mm-hmm.
that are relevant to understanding why the votes didn't support.
I, I agree, I think it's, you know.
Yep, yep, yep.
Otherwise, we're just discussing our.
Our impression is not as accurate as people telling us what.
No, absolutely, that's, that's why it's here.
And I think it could be managed, I don't think there has to be a critique.
Again, yeah, I, I, right, I just don't wanna publicize it in such a way that it's a public, come and, come and unload on this project.
Okay, I, I, I can make a, okay, I think it's a good idea to do that, because we ought to gather as much information, I had some good learning experience reading some of those posts, so I think that's a good idea.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So that we do it properly, though, uh, why don't, and we have one message on this, because if we put something like this up on Facebook, it's gonna go out to hundreds of people.
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe, uh, the chair and the town manager or whatever should formulate the expression that we're gonna say, in other words, do, do up a paragraph of what you want, and, and that'll be the only thing that goes out.
Mm-hmm.
So that if I was to take that and post that on Facebook, or our Facebook things, that
The town manager.
It's the one that, all we're gonna, we're limited to just what it is, and so if, if whoever's gonna write that could get that to, as soon as you get it, we'll put it up there.
Yeah, okay, all right, yep.
So.
Okay. All right, I'll talk to Chris about that and he's a good word smith.
I think it's good, and I also think that in doing that, um, give, give the ground rules for people's participation on, say, here it is, we recognize the widespread interest here, due to that, you're gonna be limited, have your gavel
Right.
to a minute and a half, and we're not gonna discuss every option, but we really wanna hear it, we're gonna be big ears that night, I think you should be.
Right. Yeah. Right. Right.
And then from that conversation, I think the transcript should be made, which Tracy will be doing anyways, and we should get, we shall all get a transcript of what those comments were, 'cause they're pretty interesting.
So.
So, so can we ask them, can the question be, I didn't vote for town hall because, and then they got two sentences, you know, it's not an exploration of
Mm-hmm. Right.
Or, or I voted for town hall because, whatever the choices, right, I mean, but it's two sentences, it's not, you know, a, a critique of the bathrooms, or
All right, all right, voted for, so let's get the, let's get both sides, yeah, right. Yeah.
Right. Yep.
Right, that might be a nice way to.
The stairwell, or the bushes, or, you know, whatever.
Right.
That.
So, structured, so it's meaningful, like that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because again, I don't want it to become a forum, as much as, right.
And briefing, yeah. Well, that's how you control it, is it controlled, what's gonna, but if I'm meeting next Tuesday, we should, we should have that, to post it properly, I need, I need it by Thursday, well, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, we need to do something tomorrow morning, yeah.
Well, so.
Brief and concise and.
Right, and no feedback.
'Cause that's what you're gonna see on Facebook, it's gonna get posted right up there like that.
You know, if, if you cut the feedback, you don't get.
So, are you looking to post on Facebook for commentary, is that, I'm trying to understand, 'cause we could do that on the town's Facebook page, too, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
No. Yeah, it should be on the town's Facebook page.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it should, it's.
Do the same thing everywhere, and send it to the press, so it's the same message that Diane and yourself put together.
Yeah, 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 exactly. So, basically, I. I, I, well, let's, I wanna get the gist of it right now, so I, I, so it's basically, I did, didn't vote for the town hall proposal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Proposed.
Because, okay, that's a very simple question.
Yeah.
And, and for c- clarification purposes, because.
Yeah.
Yeah, in two sentences.
But here's the guidelines, the guidelines are, uh, two sentences.
Right.
Two sentences.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, no, 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 uh.
And no semi.
No semicols.
No editorializing.
Yeah, no, no, uh.
It's all fact.
Yeah.
And if you're invited, what, to come to this meeting on the nineteenth, and express yourself in a, in a minute or less.
Well, the question is.
And, no cross-talk, no feedback.
Well, he, he, um, let me just throw this out there, right, so we're asking them to do that, and they will do it on Facebook, I mean, the, 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 no matter what you put out there, there's always gonna make a comment, so
What else?
So, we're gonna structure that, and that gives us, see, what, I don't want everybody to think that they're gonna be able to come up to the microphone and give me that sentence necessarily, because I don't think that is necessary if A, we've already discussed that
Mm-hmm.
and it is a board of selectmen meeting, um, you know, that's the, that's the.
So, why don't we play it by ear, I mean, you have control, and I, I, I don't think this is gonna get out of control.
Yep, and, uh. Right, I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
I'm not worried about over-participation here, 'cause we haven't been, one of the problems with the, the difficulties we had is nobody showed up for meetings, so if we make it a little interesting, it might be good.
No, 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 no.
No.
And I think.
Right. Well, I agree with you. I agree, but, but.
Yeah, and, and I think saying upfront, I'm, I, I don't want people, but, you know, I mean, you're, what can you do?
I'm not worried about.
No, 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 that's, that's not what I mean, yeah, right, right, what I, because I really do wanna have a public forum, I really do wanna have it
I know, I know, I know that's not what you're doing, but.
open night, it's not a board of selectmen meeting, it is, it is an opportunity for people to get more engaged in the project, that's what we're working forward.
I think that's exactly good to do, yeah.
But, I, that, that's not, that's what I don't want, a board of selectmen meeting where we have to come out with some real specific deliverables to me, that's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah. No, so we just explain it, so that's all, I'm not worried about too many people being here, we haven't, we didn't get enough in the last forums, no.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, this is super simple, tell me, uh, uh, please be direct, but simple. Is that, is that, is that simple?
And no cross-talk, and, and no, no feedback, you know?
Yeah, well. Well, he's talking about the Facebook posts from the town.
The, the, you, the focus is.
Big.
Yeah, 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 no, no, but, but I, you have to give a little guideline to this, people who are following, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I agree, I agree, as I, Diane, you're right.
Someplace we do, is that a simple enough answer, something we'll say differently?
Right.
Yes, yes.
Right, Kevin and I did discover an alias on, uh, Twitter today.
Yeah, strange one.
Yeah, right.
What's it called?
Stranger things.
I don't remember what it's called.
That's called, uh, cohesive Twitter.
Cohasset something, but, but, right, but there's.
Blah, yeah, yeah.
Are you gonna cause in trouble?
No, no, not at all, there was just somebody, I think it was a photo picture, yeah, it was just lots of conversations.
No, it's public expression. It's of interest, yeah. I'm saying, it's not, it's not.
We'll, we'll wrap it up in the, in the, in the night or the morning, the morning, circulate everybody, whose thoughts, and put it on our Facebook page, and put it on our three stage.
Yep, yeah, okay, great. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so.
Oh, and, and also, I, I probably should put it out there that we, we really, I really do wanna hear people's comments, so if they don't wanna en- engage on Facebook and they don't wanna come here on Tuesday,
We want comments, yeah, yeah, yeah.
absolutely send me or Tracy an email with, with that same answer.
Did you? Email.
Yeah, and they said email, like they said email, too, we, we can come to the town website, too.
'Cause I really want to hear it all, um, I just wanna be able to make sure we have a productive meeting next week.
No rants, no rants. Oh, we just want, we, you can't gavel Facebook.
Cut the g- yeah, you can't gavel Facebook, right, that's, that's, it is what it is.
Remember the letter we got from the prisoner, that, uh?
Oh, oh, jeez.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's made death threats and stuff.
No.
What, what happened to the good old days?
Oh, they're still there, they're still there, you just have to look harder, um, okay, everybody, everybody generally comfortable with this?
Just, the old things, the old days.
Yeah, just trying to think of the best way to harvest that, if we take that then and put it on our pages, then, and then, so, um, and if we get a bunch of comments, I think what we should probably do is then print, print off tho- those pages
And then circulate everybody, yeah.
And then they should give it to Tracy, who can put it together.
Yep. With our package.
And that should be in our package.
Yep.
And, yeah, so one, one four threes have to get a lot of comments, so if we do, I'll print it off and I'll, I'll send it to, but everybody else should, everybody else should put, what I'll do is I'll put it on my, we should put, we'll all put on our selectmen pages,
Be on the town page, go. After.
but I'll take it and put it over also to some other pages, and I'll just print out everything we get, and, but you folks do the same thing, too, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So, if that gets to me by Wednesday, then I can have that out by Friday, I'm just thinking of my hand.
You know, which, it should be an early finish meeting, if that's basic, if basically, if, I did, did vote for the town hall proposal because
Yeah, no problem, just.
Say again?
Uh, and, and please, you know, please be direct but civil with the two, yeah, something like that.
I know, I was hoping you'd make.
So, we, so send it out to us and say, this is the one that we can post, I don't think we need to pick a bunch of copies.
Right, and we'll just have the same number, which is quality.
Yeah, that's the problem, that's the issue, yeah.
Okay, um, so, moving right along, this is a record meeting.
Yes, man.
Um, Chris?
Don't, don't blow it.
Town manager's update.
Uh, so, uh, two, two quick things, I'm gonna remind everybody again, 'cause I've been posting it, uh, on our weekly updates, the last South Shore Recyclant Cooperative, which that is part of, Household Hazardous Waste Collection will be this coming Saturday from nine to one, is it Sunday? Sixteenth, that's, uh, that's Sat- yeah, yeah, Saturday, Saturday, at the Situate Highway Department, which is on Captain Pierce Road between nine AM and one PM.
The Sat- Saturday.
Uh, if you have any questions about what's, what's eligible, go to the town's website, or go to the SSRDC, SSRDC website, uh, and it's a great opportunity to, whatever, you know, all paint in.
So, they will take paint?
They will take paint, there are certain rules about how they'll do it, though.
Yeah.
And, um.
It's latex paint, though, it doesn't need to go there.
No, it doesn't, um.
It's gotta, it's gotta be dried, then. Yep.
Yeah, so there's, there are rules about how to do it, you know, if you have old batteries, if you have, you know, some old pesticides and stuff you have, they wanna get rid of, do it safely, you can bring it there, it's free to town residents, it's part of the deal.
Well, of course.
So, please, uh, please, uh, if you have anything, it's this Saturday at the Situate Highway Department, they may actually have a show ID because a lot of committees are involved, too, but there's a shortage from class, and it's free. Um, and again, if you have any questions, you have to call the officer on the website, there should be information, um, so just to look at the calendar for a second, so, um, I, I'm gonna prepare up an FY nineteen full calendar, we actually have a tentative's calendar at the end of the year, but I wanna do a whole FY nineteen. Just a couple of dates, not to give commentary, too necessary, but think in the back of your mind, a tentative special town meeting date of December tenth, that's the second Monday of December, um, and there's two reasons for that, one is that we have primaries and a govern- gubernatorial election, so there will be early voting, so the town clerk will be swamped with early voting for the few weeks before, so it would, i- i- if we do a town meeting in early October, it's a very short timeframe, um, and
So, you tell them December third tentative?
Uh, the, the tenth would be, 'cause the third is also the first night of Hanukkah, I'd rather, you know, kinda, we don't really wanna do the first night of Hanukkah, so, the tenth is about as late as we can go, because that's still two weeks ahead of Christmas and all that.
Yeah, no, tenth, right.
I do that.
So, that's the, the special. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, it's a Monday, if anyone has any thoughts, just, I'm just throwing that as a possible date, um, and there's all the routine things we'll do and some other potential things, and obviously.
So, one of the questions came up was whether or not to do it on a Saturday, now, in the past, when was the last regular town meeting on a Saturday?
Three years ago.
Four, four years ago, I think.
You.
The, well, the difference is, there's not spring sports in December, so you could do it on a Saturday, but it's not as much interfering on a Saturday, if you wanna give it a try, we could do it that file, that Saturday before, ten, the eighth, you know, I'll just throw that out.
On a Monday night, I'm prepared.
I think we had, made a discussion of w- where we were gonna get better attendance, and I'm not sure where we came out on that, you know?
Right, right.
Yeah.
'Cause I, I think before it was earlier, and there was, there was the fall sports, and it was Monday, everyone's working, and then people were working, they gotta get straight from work to here, I mean, there's, there's plus to that, so.
Yeah, but, I mean, I.
Yeah, your attendance was good last time, right, we had over four hundred people, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, the regular town meeting, yeah, there's special time meetings always been a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, how many was on it?
I'm ag- I'm agnostic, I mean, I.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of the Monday night, frankly, you know, 'cause I think a lot of people do a lot of things on weekends.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not asking for, just to throw out, just think about it, um.
Yeah, it's something to think about, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure the Monday's.
Well, and we'll have a, we'll have this as an agenda item to set all the dates, yeah.
Yes, but I'm, but I'm asking you just to think about it a little bit in advance, so, the, the, uh, the September calendar currently has meetings on the eleventh and the twenty-fifth?
September?
Correct.
Eleven twenty-five. Yep.
Uh, so, um, now, the, the eleventh, September eleventh is September eleventh, so I don't know, uh, if that's a big deal or not, uh, I will be out of town on the twenty-fifth, that's the, well, that's the ICM annual conference
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
that was set after, we set the, the date for the year, um, I would like to be able to go to that, that's an annual thing I try to attend.
Oh, yeah.
And since I'm, uh, on the conference planning committee for next year, I need to be there to be part of that, um, as the state representative to that committee, so, I don't know if you wanna think about it, I'm asking, uh, to, to move the, the October the fourth, 'cause that is, it's the day after Labor Day, I don't know if that's a problem, school starts that day, but I'm just throwing that out there, you could move to the fourth and the eighteenth instead of the eleventh and twenty-fifth, because there's gonna be a big gap
Yeah, yeah.
because there's only one meeting schedule in August, and you'd be like a whole month between meetings, so that would allow you not to be having potential.
That's what I was gonna say. That's, I, I think we should meet on the fourth, regardless of what happens at the end of the month, because, for that very reason, 'cause we only have one meeting scheduled in August.
Okay.
I I think we should meet on the fourth, regardless of what happens at the end of the month, because for that very reason, cause we only have one meeting scheduled in August.
Um it it, from somehow in memory, is fourth an election day?
Wait.
I can see this, it is, yeah, that's a primary, yeah, that's a primary.
Is that maybe it's?
What month are we talking about?
Yeah, the election, no, I'll be right with the last.
Yeah, that's a primary, yeah, that's a primary.
Primary election day.
Fourth.
I'm sorry.
We've done that before, haven't we?
State.
No, no, no.
No.
Fourth of September.
Oh, September, I'm sorry, September fourth. I don't know, I think there's a great discouragement to have election, uh to have meetings on a, on an election, election day.
Yeah, I did, I did.
Yep.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll look at some dates, um.
Or we could do eleventh and eighteenth or something, yeah, okay.
You could, I I I, the only, the only problem with going too late is that, again, we're we're, ten will be only scheduled for one meeting on this, which I think all of your.
Or the fifth, you know, can't we maybe look at a Wednesday, or a Thursday?
Yeah, we can, I can check some other dates, I think they're there.
Yep.
If you just wanna check, if you can all just check your calendars, we're still a few months ahead.
Yep.
Yeah, well, let's do this, all of the meetings, I do think we should get, like, so you're envisioning having all of our meetings set right up in the major.
Yes. Yes, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna give a, a calendar for the whole next year, so we can buy stuff that ends up.
It's a possibility.
Cause I, yeah, I think we should get that on our calendars, yes, yes, yes.
That is me with my travel.
I've I've had conversations with both the chairman of capital budget and the chairman of advisory about how um things worked in the process. And there's always good and bad, right, so we tried some new things, we tried the joint meetings. Um one of the joint meetings didn't work because it wasn't properly posted, because of the crazy weather we were having, another one wasn't properly posted necessarily, but it was very productive, that was the school one, and which I think worked, even though it wasn't perfect. Um the capital budget was the one, it was the way structured, the way it was theoretically envisioned, and I think that worked, but I I, all of your input on that would be very helpful. Something that, I'm just socializing this for you to think about, some of the conversation I've had with Sam and with John was doing maybe a forum, as opposed to a formal meeting, and it could be posted, so everybody could participate on the warrant, early.
Yes.
Like a budget forum that all the committees could come to and just talk, uh without decisions necessarily being made, but have an opportunity for the committees to be there and perhaps have something like that on the capital budget as well, um early or in the process. Um what we did this past year was I engaged liaisons from advisory on departmental budget conversation, which was very productive, and we engaged liaisons from capital, the department meetings very early on, which was also very productive, just wanna keep that piece.
Yeah, from a, from a governance point of view, I think it's a good idea, from a governance point of view, this year, I I think it would be good if we did something different and met more with capital and advisory. And commu- you know, met more and communicated more earlier and taken some, I don't know exactly how we would do that diff- but let's really try to do that more, because uh
Yep.
Uh especially if we're gonna go through another major thing like a town hall process, uh I'd like for us to be talking with these committees directly more, more, more formally. Especially advisory, especially capital.
Yep.
So I don't know how it can work there, I mean, discussing.
Yeah, no, I have some thoughts about that, but I won't.
But I'm just throwing that out there for to think about, because we 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 always wanted to improve the process.
Yeah.
Sure they're now, yeah. Yeah.
The um, uh so that's, those are the, that's the big new things I wanna talk about tonight, otherwise I, uh you know, I've been, the 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 the, the end of the week updates that I'm also sending, shame with the Mariner now, she's to be working. Um I've been getting good updates on, I didn't realize the sports was such a rush to the end of the end of the year.
Yeah.
Coliseum teams have done some great, great stuff by the way, so uh I think it was really good weekend, so, um but that's, that's what I got.
Okay. All right, we'll do selectmen update, Kevin?
How's that?
Paul?
Uh the arts festival is this weekend, so don't forget, and Father's Day is this weekend as well, so.
Thank you.
Don't forget that.
Don't forget that, uh but it's a a great turnout, I think it's the largest attended um project or or um either of the of the town, I think um for everyone that shows up, it's something like three or four thousand people that pass through, it's up to ten, so keep in mind, is it one of that?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Like ten thousand, over three days, yeah.
And it's all, ten thousand? Wow, so it's all the town size.
Sometimes they count me thirty seven times.
But it's always fun, it's, it's a good turnout, it's sort of good weather, it's mostly good weather, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the the most, let me, I wanna jump, just to add to that, I had it, I have mentioning arts festival more because of parking and just to really encourage everybody to park and use the shuttles, because it just really is crazy um down in the the downtown village area. Um so the shuttles run on Friday and Sunday, I believe, from Music Circus, and on Saturday, because they have a show, it runs from the Deer Hill parking lot. So please, even if you're local, um do the local traffic a favor and um, you know, take a walk from the Music Circus or um.
Or bike down.
Or bike down or something, yes, Jack?
What, what are they?
Good.
The uh Mass Municipal Vulnerability Project, started it uh last week, we had a meeting, I thought it was well attended, it had great uh
Sorry.
Very well attended, yeah.
Great ideas of uh how to protect the town with many, many major storms flooding in, um disasters, I thought it was well attended.
One of the fifty town residents and staff participated, it was very well attended, very engaging, uh and we should, getting a report to share with everybody, uh and I think it's gonna be great.
Fifty, yeah.
Not only, as I mentioned when I said this out, I noticed that last Friday, not only was it greatly well attended, and it's gonna be a good report, but it's gonna open class out now as a, will be an MVP partner with the state, which will open us up to more grand opportunities than we have for infrastructure and sidewalks and. Okay, I'm good.
Steve, do you have anything?
Um uh congratulations, two thousand eighteen graduates, I don't think.
Absolutely.
Um and just a question, is Bound Brook closed, is the project closed?
Um, no.
Okay. Uh can, then, uh just a a request that uh sometime within the next thirty days, we can get an update on um on the status of the project, as uh including the financial status. That's it for me.
Okay, I just have uh two quick things, one is uh the next master plan public forum is June twentieth at Wilco Commons, which I believe is next.
It's actually Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
No, it's tomorrow.
Um and there's also an MVP program, um public forum in July on the seventeenth.
You're going that way.
No, that's for the seventh, perfect.
Um yeah, I think, I think I got a notification about that, so, well, next week is the master plan public forum um on on the twentieth. Um and then, just, Chris, you, if you could just say, the lieutenant governor was in town the other day and had a quick tour of the harbor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, the lieutenant governor, um Polito, Karen Polito, uh made an impromptu visit last week, uh visited Situate and Coasette and Hull. Um it was a quick tour, uh wasn't able to get on the boat, but uh we took a sailing club, uh gave her a quick update as up to, as to where the harbor plan was. Tim Davis, the the chairman of the harbor committee, was there, Pete, our planner, Daniel was able to sneak down, and um Joe Moschino joined there and supported the tour, and it was a great conversation, it was just an update. Uh but we had a good, you know, it was convenient that Bill does links with the state, she was very impressed with the work, she actually loved the sailing location and the physical ability.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Uh and uh and she's looking forward to coming back, uh so, but really talked, loved how we were doing the MVP and how we were doing the harbor plan, and how we were doing the master plan, and how that all really links together and allows opens the town up to future opportunities to build and to, you know, to 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 dovetail all that work, um infrastructure.
And s- seek extra mon- seek uh grant money, and that's, you know, she talked a lot about how that's important to them, to get people, uh get catalyze the planning and then have the carrot at the end for the, for the proper planning, and Tim did a great job on the harbor presentation, and um and we'll do have a harbor committee update as soon as we can, here.
Yes, he did. Yep.
Just a quick supplement on, you said on the master plan, the three topics are gonna be economic development, housing, and historic and cultural resources. So we we expect it to be a well-attended and interesting forum, those will be the three topics.
It's Wilco Commons, right?
At Wilco Commons, yes, yeah, yeah, so, we've got a flyer we can put up on our Facebook pages.
It's a Wilco Commons, September eleventh? Yeah, they're very interesting.
Um does anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.